I grabbed some earlier.
Want some more, or are you good?
Not good for right now.
A call to order the Carver County Board of Commissioners July 2nd, 2019, regular session. Will now please join me as we pay our respects to the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the county board meeting. We're a little late starting this morning. We dedicated the new Carver County Veteran Service van. We had a good number of veterans from Carver County and the commissioners and other folks who support our veterans there this morning, and that was a very nice little event. So apologize for the late start. Next on the agenda, I have introductions of new employees. Is that going to be on this morning? There we go. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Chad Riley. I'm the IT Manager for GIS and Software. I'm happy to introduce the board today, Matthew Rantella, who started with us in March, and he's filling vacancy for our senior GIS analyst. Matt comes to us with over 20 years of experience in GIS in both the public and the private sector, so I'd like to introduce Matt to you guys.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm happy to be working today with the GIS staff. I know Pete and Chad have built a really award-winning program here with your support. My previous employer, I did a lot of fiber mapping for US Internet, and prior to that, I worked with WSB and Associates, consulting firm that's working on the Coney Island project quite a bit. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to work here.
And the public might not understand, Matthew, as well as you do, that the GIS is becoming an important part of how we do operations here at all local governments and also at the federal level. So it makes it better for all the taxpayers, the good job that you do. So welcome aboard, and traditionally, we have you come around what we call the ring here, and we greet you and welcome you to your employment, so.
Welcome to Carver County, Matt.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's me.
Welcome, Matt. Glad to have you.
You're important, Matt.
You're more important than marketing.
That's good. Matt, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Oh, okay. Mr. Just has somebody, too.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Just, Land Management. Happy to introduce Kathleen Russell. She's our new planner in the Land Management Department. She started part-time in March. She was previously with Oakdale. She finished her graduate degree and started, transitioned to full-time on May 20th as a planning. She has been doing a lot with the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment already.
So she has her degree now?
Master's degree.
Master's degree, wow, okay. Come on forward and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah. Good morning, County Commissioners and Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself to the board today. I'm originally from the Chicago area, so I moved here to finish my master's degree and just completed it in May. So I've been here for a little bit, working part-time, but I'm excited to start my full-time work. I've been here about a month for full-time work, but I'm excited to jump into the work in the Land Management Department.
Well, welcome, and we're glad you're here. If you can come along, and we'll do our ceremonial welcome.
Nice to meet you. Welcome, glad to have you.
Okay, no other employees? Very good. We'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the County Board of Commissioners on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and introduce yourself and your address, please.
Karen Johnson Lightner, 1573-538-St., Mayor of Minnesota, 55360. I'm not representing Carver County Commissioners, Carver County Attorney's Office, Carver County Administration Staff, Carver County Sheriff's Office. I am a prevalent public watchdog. Yesterday, I sent many of the people in the Carver County Government a video and an email, and it was actually the documentation, starting now, of Dave Linder, who is John Linder's son. And on that video, he brags about, it was a bill to sell, 100,000 watt broadcasting CUP. That CUP was given out by Carver County. The government helped the CUP make, in January 2000, that man ended up, a couple months later, pulling in $17 million profit. A man from Mankato. Carver County Government, without the permission of the Carver County Taxpayers, in January of 1999, started the process of a one permit, no matter how many antennas would be shown, not shown to the citizens, but later on, many, many times, I have shown this on the videos. So what I'm saying is, you started a process that wasn't for the taxpayers. And I am a citizen of Hollywood Township, and I came to a meeting of what John Linder, I read the leases, and they were on there saying there was going to be 10 antennas, as you could see by that design. That was more than that, and that the lease probably would have been changed later on because everybody just initials leases and don't understand, to 10 tenants. That would make that design possible. At the same time, in 1999, John Linder was building a tower in Silver Lake, and nobody seemed to even need to be transparent, or there wasn't full disclosure for the next owners and the next owners and the next owners. I want to say that I'm prepared to fight this till, for the people, for the safety of the people, that the actual broadcasting of the emergency communication is worth being out there, but we got to make changes. And I have the backup to support everything I say. This email here, I have asked many of them, but you haven't had time, but this is a payday for the Commissioners and a payday for our government people. If you're on the email, read this. Watch the video. And I will be back next time you have a Commissioners' meeting, and I want to say that you do not let Dave Linder call us wackos, and you do not let Dave Linder say that it's in cornfields because it was right next to people. So we got a new start. Everybody, happy 4th of July.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the County Board during the public comment portion? So you know, and we'll move on to item number two on the agenda, that which revolves around the Agenda Review and Adoption. Is there a motion to approve the Agenda?
Mr. Chairman, with Amendment, Agenda Amendments, 5.21, Park Commission Appointment, we'd like to add that to the Consent Agenda, and delete 7.1, the Award the Construction Contract for the Mental Health and Wellness Center.
Second. Okay, a motion to approve the Agenda with noted changes has been duly made by Commissioner Degler and second by Commissioner Ishi. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion prevails, and the Agenda is approved. Moving on to the item number three, the Approve the Minutes of the June 25th, 2019, Order of Appeals and Equalization, in the June 25th, 2019 Special Session. So is there a motion?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Move approval for the approval of those minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion prevails. Moving on to community announcements, Commissioner Degler.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Chaska Historical Society is putting on World War I, World War II exhibition that's going to open up July 11th at 6:30. It's going to run from July 11th all the way through Veterans' Day, November 15th. It's open Tuesdays through Fridays. It's a very good exhibition about World War I, World War II. A lot of things were put into this, a lot of time and effort was put into this, so take time, visit the Chaska Historical Society. Getting to the Chaska Historical Society will probably be easier than getting to the courthouse, because if you travel down Fourth Street, and especially in the intersection of Fourth and Oak, they're doing a lot of street reconstruction. The city of Chaska is a multi-year project, and this year, they happen to be on the east side of town. And like I say, Fourth Street and Oak, that's kind of the intersection that they're focusing on right now. They're ripping up the asphalt, and hopefully by fall, the streets and utilities will be back in place. St. John's is still open, and it will be all summer, but it will be a little bit harder to get to, just like Guardian Angels has been for the last year or so. So they're moving from the west side of town, now they're doing the east side of town, but street reconstruction is a good project once it's completed. And the last thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, the 4th of July is this Thursday, and mark your calendars, be up in Chanhassen. You can be up there starting tonight, tomorrow night, all Friday, or Thursday and parts of Friday, but the highlight is the parade. Chanhassen has a huge parade, starts at 2:30 in the afternoon, and we hope to see you up there.
Thank you, Commissioner Degler. Commissioner Workman, anything to add on the Chanhassen 4th of July celebration?
Yeah, no, I don't have anything for that, Mr. Chairman, but I was thinking, while I was saying the Pledge of Allegiance on this most patriotic of weeks, how happy I am that this County Board does say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here, here. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lynch.
I would like to remind everyone that we have two fine fireworks shows, one at Lakeman-Washville and one in Lake Waconia, after dark on the 4th of July. They're both wonderful. And on a sad note, I'd like to mention that a longtime Colon resident, Mike Wiggy, who is 56, passed away, and really a great guy, so it's very unfortunate.
It is unfortunate, yeah. A great person for the community, yeah. And then also on the fireworks show, of course, Chanhassen has one, many of our communities have them, so go out and support those, and I'm sure, even as old of the kid as I am, I still enjoy those fireworks and look at them, so. Anything else for public comments tonight, today? All right, seeing none, moving on to the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman. I would second.
Motion by Degler, second by Commissioner Lynch. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion prevails, the Consent Agenda is approved. Moving on to item number six, which under our strategic plan and mission, under connections, develop strong public partnerships and connect with people and services. And we're going to have our MICA legislative update now, and Mr. Keith Carlson, possibly the final time that you'll be here doing this?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It is my final time.
And how many years have you been doing this presentation?
Mr. Chairman, just short of 20, 20 years.
Just short of 20 years, okay.
Now that you finally got it down, now you're...
Now we got to retrain somebody.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure for me to be here again. With me this morning are Steve Novak, Nancy Seleski, and Carly Stark will follow me to the podium, then I'll have a few closing comments. I want to start with this morning, a sort of an overview of this session, and what I want to do is what has the impact of what the legislature has done for Carver County and what's kind of the future portend. So to start with, I think you all know that the session provided some significant short-term gains for Carver County and other counties. In 2020, the county is looking at a $438,000 increase in its county program aid. That funding that underlies that will be increased from $26 million statewide in 2020 to $30 million in 2021 and subsequent years. We did have some changes in cost shares that Nancy will cover more thoroughly, but I'll just say that while we did have an increase in the cost share for civilly committed sex offenders on provisional release, that will be more than offset, at least on a statewide basis, by reductions in our costs for the Chemical Dependency Treatment Fund. Contrary to the governor's objectives and the House State Foul Caucuses, there will be no new payroll tax for state-paid sick leave. So that's an additional cost that counties and other employers were able to dodge. And finally, there's no threat of MMA cost shifts or Min Care cutbacks due to the legislature acting to repeal the sunset of the provider tax, the primary funding source for the Healthcare Access Fund. On the bad side of the ledger, as you all know, the legislature ended up essentially doing nothing on transportation funding. That means that there's no new gas tax, no increases in registration fees, no metro sales tax, and no new funding for Greater Minnesota Transit. There's no funding for the local road wetland replacement program, that Steve will cover in some additional detail. However, we did get $200,000 to go forward with the final steps leading to the state's hopeful takeover of the federal wetland permitting program. So instead of for road projects or any other construction projects affecting wetlands, instead of pulling two permits, you would pull one. But yet, all the requirements of both state and federal law would be observed if we go forward with that following the conclusion of this last step. Revenue and general obligation bonds payable with your local option sales tax were authorized, so it gives you some additional financing flexibility. And a significant piece of good news is there was no change in the lease motor vehicle sales tax distribution, which is a significant revenue source for your highway funding here in Carver County. The longer term, however, does not look so bright. The long-term general fund outlook for the state is somewhat reason for concern. You know that the state's net revenues, while they continue to grow, that growth rate is declining, and that's been a phenomenon that we've seen throughout basically the six-year horizon, going back to the following biennium, coming up to this biennium that began today and going to the next. So we're going from a 6.2% rate of growth for the current biennium fiscal years 2020, '21, to a 5% rate of growth, whereas expenditures see somewhat of a similar decline, it doesn't decline as much. As a consequence, if you look down to the bottom line, structural balance, current revenues less expenditures, the state is basically dipping into its trust fund for over half a billion dollars to pay for what would be the projected expenditures if current law stays in place for the period that would begin on June, July 1st of 2021. Compounding that is the fact that the expenditure side doesn't include inflation. If you add an inflation, that would add another 2.8 billion or 2.7 billion to that total, and the state simply doesn't have that resources. The legislators would say, well, we don't have to fund inflation, but the fact of the matter is, they usually do fund a large portion of it, of the projected inflation of $1,977 million for the current biennium. They funded over $800 million of that. Off and mentioned, just one other thing, is that the expenditures for 2022 do depend on the state enacting $100 million of health and human services cuts that have yet to be identified. I think the final thing that's worthy of noting is this forecast, these projections do anticipate a slowing of the economy, but it doesn't anticipate a recession, and so that's, I think, the largest reason for concern. I'll kind of end on a good note in that the state's revenues to date are running substantially ahead of collections. In April, they were up over $489 million, and the June, excuse me, the May figure that was reported a few weeks ago, they're up another $148 million. Unfortunately, I believe these are one-time sort of events, which does not portend for continuing good news for the state's economy. I think as many of you have probably seen in the paper, the state is really being constrained by lack of bodies to increase the state's employment. You need those bodies to generate the economic activity, to generate the tax revenues that will sustain the state. So with that, I'll conclude unless there are questions, and turn things over to Steve to talk about the transportation portion of the...
Mr. Chairman, you started by saying, and I'll put you on the spot, did the legislature do something for Carver County or do something to Carver County?
Mr. Chairman, I'd say they did something for Carver County with the increase in county program aid, but again, as you all know, transportation was left begging.
Thank you. So, and just one question. Keith, you made a point in your final comments about, you know, the lack of workforce is really not allowing our economy to grow as it could, so would you also credit that if we have that workforce, we have to have the housing also?
Mr. Chairman, definitely, that's a big issue.
There was probably two of one of the most, or of the most significant factors that could harm our economy growing or maintaining its current strength, would that be...
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. I mean, the legislature did make investment in additional housing. Nancy has some details on that. Whether or not that's enough, you know, that's leave it to others' judgment.
Thank you, Keith. You should, you're going to do a wrap-up, too, at the end?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have some final comments.
Okay, great. Okay, Nancy. Oh, we're going to have, okay. Is that because he's senior? Welcome to the podium, Mr. Steve Novak, one of the best state senators we ever had in the state of Minnesota. Even Commissioner Workman agrees with that.
I'm speechless. I'll just say, nice to be in Carver County.
I would be, too. I would be, too, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for all your work you do for Carver County, by the way. We talk on a pretty regular basis about issues, particularly transportation, and you do a great job for us, we appreciate that, so.
Thank you for your kind comments. Let me just go through a review of what did and didn't happen in transportation this past year. Of course, the year started with a lot of expectation, coming off the election with a new governor who had actually campaigned on a gas tax. And then between then and the beginning of the session, things got geared up, and off we went with a new House majority, new governor, and an existing Senate. As we worked through the entire session, in the end, because of political differences, the state really had no budget, which included transportation. So then we went into a special session to deal with that budget, including the transportation component in terms of general funds. And in the end, the way that worked out for transportation was they were allocated $93.5 million, none of which went to roads and bridges. Basically, it went to an issue that had dominated the hearings, MinLARS, and what to do about it, how to fix it. And the MinLARS replacement system, the new governor made a concession to the Senate, went along with their proposal to put this out on bid in the private sector, and the amount of money that's been set aside to deal with that contract is $55.6 million. Another issue that got a lot of attention was metro mobility, and whether or not it should have a separate line item in the budget, and if so, how much should be allocated. And the answer to that question became $23.19 million in fiscal year 2020, with an additional $13 million if the money's available for 2021. And as Keith mentioned in his comments, the money will be available, so that money will be allocated. And then finally, $13 million was allocated to Deputy Register reimbursement. If you were lucky enough, like I was, to go through all of the transportation hearings in the House and the Senate, you would have gotten a lot of feedback on how the MinLARS system wasn't working, and the pain that was incurred by some of the deputy registrars around the state. And so the legislature's sort of bipartisan collective response of that was to allocate $13 million in reimbursement. And that basically is where the general funds went. I think the best way to frame the explanation of where we started and how we ended is to just set up the politics of the competition between the House and the Senate. The House basically passed most of what the governor proposed, and what the governor proposed would have been a record amount of money for roads and bridges through the traditional sources of gas taxes and license fees and tab fees and so on and so forth. The Senate basically was suggesting, and they did prevail in almost every count, that the work that had been done by them and others in 2017 to begin a shift of general funds to pay for transportation was the right policy. Some of the things that were put into place in 2017, like a sales tax on auto parts, a switch in the way we allocated money on lease vehicle sales tax, they have progressions of increased money over the next three, four, or five years that will now, in effect, take place and will create some new money, because that Senate position of basically stand pat with the 2017 law is the position that did prevail. So to be specific about it, the sales tax on auto parts was the basic centerpiece of those proposals in 2017, and they do move forward at a rate of $114 million in new money per year, and that's the biggest component of, I guess, what we would call new money, even though it's current statute. But that was the Senate position, and that did prevail. As it relates to lease vehicle sales tax, we sort of had the same situation. We had the Senate essentially saying, we want to stick with the law that we have in place. The House was trying very hard to find a way to get Hennepin and Ramsey County into the mix, and the way they ultimately did that was to take our longstanding partner, meaning the suburban county's longstanding partner, Greater Minnesota Transit, out of the lease vehicle sales tax, pay for it in a different way, replace it with Hennepin and Ramsey County, which they attached artificial numbers to in terms of percentages of their actual population, to come up with a formula that actually created slightly more money for counties like Carver than existing law, but the payback for that is you would have a new partnership, and that partnership would be with Hennepin and Ramsey County. That position did not prevail, so again, current law, which was the Senate position, prevailed, and that amongst other things preserves that special bridge fund that was put into place in 2017, and that will produce $13 million additional money for bridges in the first year and $14 million in the second year. Then the third component that leads to increased money as a result of sticking with current statute, in this case through trunk highway cash related directly to corridors of commerce, will produce an additional $25 million per year over the biennium for a total of 50. So that's kind of where it's at in terms of money, disappointing overall, but there is some progress that goes forward by sticking with current statute. In terms of some individual transportation bills that were signed into law by the governor, back in March, actually, again, related to MinLARS, there was concern they might not make it to the end of the year, so there was an infusion of money through a special piece of legislation there. Then a bill that got a lot of attention that will go into place August 1st is the ban on the use of handheld cell phones while you're driving. Another bill that became law is a result of an actual situation that occurred with the light rail system, where a person was killed based on a light rail operator not coming under law, the laws that applied to drivers, and that law was changed to make that equal. And then there was a work zone flagger bill that passed in terms of safety at work zone sites. In addition to that, there were some other important transportation items that did become law, most of which were lodged inside different types of funding bills in the special session. That includes an additional one-year moratorium on the mowing and haying issue, which I know you've spent a little time on over the years. Again, there was discussion in committee about weight limits, in this case, related to septic system pumping trucks. That was going to be the exception this time around. That did not become law, so there's no changes in truck weight legislation. The Metropolitan Council is once again authorized to issue grant anticipation bonds. The Metropolitan Council also was authorized to issue $92 million in bonds for new buses. And as I meant, also, metro mobility service was extended to the city of Lakeville, and there was a $1 filing fee increase for vehicle registration and titling. And then just to conclude and reemphasize what Keith had mentioned, just to be clear about it, in the end, there was no gas tax increase, there was no license tab increase, no metro sales tax increase, and there was no bonding bill, even though right up until quarter seven in the morning on the last day, they were working on one. There was no bonding bill. As a result of that, there was no money for the local road wetland replacement program, and that's going to be a situation that probably will be in front of you by next year, because even by the end of this last session, we had four out of the 10 districts with no credits to trade. And that problem will only get worse, it will not get better. And that problem will only get worse, it will not get better, without additional money. So, even though Keith and I and others had untold numbers of one-on-one meetings with legislators about the importance of this for them and others, all of which met with a lot of agreement, there was no money that was put forward to close that gap, so that will be in front of you next year. So, that would be my report, and I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Mr. Novak? Okay. Two for me. Bonding bill next year, pretty good chance it's gonna happen?
I think there's a great deal of anticipation that going into next year, which is a normal bonding year. That was part of the argument of the Senate amongst others, was that we've got to get back to that old cycle of odd-numbered years for the budget, even-numbered years for bonding. So that issue won't be there to detract from the issue of bonding next year, and it's also an election year. Historically, legislature likes to pass bonding bills as they're going into an election. So I think the probability of a decent-sized bonding bill is quite high.
And the metro mobility-lined item, does that allow more discretion, less discretion? How does that affect the relationship of that issue in the Met Council, who kind of watches over that? In your estimation?
Well, if everything proceeds the way people would like it to, it would, by providing them with a dedicated line of funding, it, in theory, would distract from the competition that's often been there between the regular line service and metro mobility for X amount of dollars that almost never seems to be enough to cover both factions. A lot of the metro mobility stuff, which everybody politically likes to support in the first place, is also backed up by federal and state law, which gives them an edge in the competition for dollars that are usually less than what they need. So from that standpoint, in theory, this should provide a little progress in that area.
Well, my interest is sometimes the op-outs or folks like our Southwest Transportation, Transit folks, our Southwest Transit folks end up on the short end of that stick, so we want to, dedicated funding might be a good solution for us from Carver County's point of view, anyway.
That could be. The only, the other thing I've noticed about that the last couple of years is they've been a lot more aggressive in the hearings than they have been previously. They're a lot more visible than they've been, and I think, overall, I think it's probably helped them some.
All right. Anything else for us, Steve?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Appreciate that. And Nancy's up next.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Seleski, and I do Health and Human Services for MICA, and it's a pleasure to be here again this morning. So I start off my comments by saying I think you've never heard me say that it was a really good year for Health and Human Services, and it proved to be the year, indeed. Several of the county priorities were included in the final bill. The county appeals language that we've been working on for about a year and a half with the Department of Human Services was included. This is for those cases where a client has been delayed in terms of the discharge from either the Minnesota Sex Offender Program or the CBHH facilities, and the delay was caused by the facility. So we now have an appeals process that we can utilize. There was also language that was included that allows for the limited exchange of data between the sheriff and social services for folks that are being released from our jails. The data, again, is limited. It's up to the client whether they want to receive the social services. If they decline, saying, it was a bad day yesterday, I'm good today, I don't need anything, that data then needs to be destroyed within 15 days. The legislature, excuse me, eliminated the 20% withhold related to child protection. They put money into the Child Welfare Training Academy, which will be housed at the University of Minnesota. They provided statewide funding for mobile crisis services, which will make up for some funding that was lost a few years ago. This will restore the grants to the 2017 funding levels. They put money into children's residential services and increased the bed capacity. There's 80 beds that will be added in July of 2020 and 70 in July of 2023. They put $20 million into systems modernization, and Keith already mentioned the provider tax. That is going to be continued. There was a reduction from 2% to 1.8% ongoing. Keith also mentioned the cost share that we picked up relative to the Minnesota Sex Offender Program. The legislature did put $16 million into the, per biennium into the program, but included a 25% county cost share for those folks that are provisionally released from the facility. That's estimated to cost counties about $3.5 million per biennium. However, this was offset by the state taking over the county cost share related to behavioral health services. The state is taking over the current county cost share for medical assistance paid services, which will save counties about $8 million per biennium, and also the county share of room and board is being assumed by the state, and that will save counties an estimated $10 million in the first biennium and $9 in the second. In terms of public health, ship was, is, remained funded at the current rate, at $17.5 million a year. There is language that says that up to 25% of grants to community health boards or tribes can be used for culturally or ethnically focused strategies. They also included the telemedicine exemption. There was a limit on how often we could use telemedicine for medical assistance services. They did include the exemption, and that is for the treatment and control of tuberculosis. They funded the statewide tobacco cessation quit line. They also added e-cigarettes to the Clean Indoor Air Act, and they expanded the prohibition of tobacco products to charter schools. Terms of standalone bills, excuse me, we had a bill that the governor signed early on session that says that if new technology comes on, that the state, you know, releases new technologies, that counties will have the ability to do some user acceptance testing before that would go online. They did take care of the opioid prevention bill this year. That was a bill that was around for about three years. Effective July 1st, just yesterday, the fees on pharmaceutical manufacturers went up. The state will collect about $42 million based on those fee increases. Of that, $16.3 million will go to counties to provide child protection services to children and families that are affected by addiction, and another $16.3 million will be going toward front-end prevention and education-type services. They also put money into traditional healing grants, non-narcotic pain management, MBCA drug scientists and labs. Terms of what didn't pass, there were a few things I want to mention. They did not expand the home visiting program. That was in the House bill, not in the Senate. That did not get picked up. They also did not expand the local public health grant. T-21, the tobacco raising age to age 21, was not included. And, well, there were discussions about the African-American Family Preservation Act that did not get completed. There were discussions will continue over the interim, and there were a couple of components that did pass related to that. One is the reestablishment of the parent-child relationship after a parent's rights have been terminated for a low-level crime. These crimes cannot involve children in any way. And they also, I mentioned the Child Welfare Training Academy. There's a cultural component that will be part of that training. Other significant thing that didn't happen was a proposal by Governor Walz and the House for the One Care buy-in, which was essentially expanding Minnesota care to others. Mr. Chair, you asked about housing. I would just direct you to pages six and seven, under Human Services. It's in the Agriculture and Housing Bill, and they did put $2 million into workforce housing development, and also $10 million into family homelessness prevention and assistance programs. And there are some other items there that are on pages six and seven of the report. With that, I would say it was, like I said, a pretty darn good year in Health and Human Services. I want to recognize Rod Franks from your county. He does a really great job of representing not only Carver County but counties as a whole, and he spent a significant amount of time at the legislature this year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Nancy?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the fees going up on narcotics, opioids. What are the chances, was it brought up, that that'll be just passed on to the consumer?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, that's always a discussion about, you know, who ends up paying it, and I can't answer how the pharmaceutical companies will react, but that is a concern that they raise. The one other thing I would just mention about that is there's litigation ongoing right now against the manufacturers, opioid manufacturers, and there is a sunset relative to that fee increase. In the event that there's a substantial, I think it's a $250 million settlement that would come into the state, then those fees would go down.
And kind of a follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
There's been a lot of talk about insulin and the price caps. Did any, obviously, nothing occurred? Do you project anything?
Yeah. So, full disclosure, Commissioners, I represent one of the three manufacturers of insulin, so I was very much involved in that debate. You saw a lot of activity on it. Those activities are continuing over the interim. There's some talk of a special session. In terms of how this gets resolved, I'm not sure. There are some programs that are being highlighted that probably were not real well, the companies have programs, I guess, is what I'm saying, and so that's all part of the mix and how that would fit into a state program.
So Nancy, you talked about housing. Does it appear that both sides of the aisle seem to recognize that workforce housing, particularly, that's somewhat of a, at least a minor crisis here in Minnesota at this time? Do you feel that's a fair statement?
Mr. Chair, I do. I think that's evidenced by the fact that they did put significant money into that bill, into that separate bill.
Very much, Nancy. Anything you'd like to add?
I think that is it for me. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but I got distracted by all your compliments, and I forgot to mention something very important, which is...
Well, I know you're not used to that, so...
No. Lyndon, your county engineer, I wanted to pay special compliment to him for all the years we've worked together and everything he adds to our group. We meet every month. He does a tremendous job for you, but also for the association, and provides a lot of people with a lot of good information on a regular basis, so I did want to mention that.
Thank you very much. We're quite proud of Lyndon, and we try to pay him appropriately, so it's... And now the new member of our legislative team at MICA, so...
Hello, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Carly Stark. I cover public safety for MICA. Not a lot happened in public safety this year. As far as what did not pass, there was no increase to county probation funding, so whatever money you got for county probation officer reimbursement last year is going to be the same amount as this year, without any inflationary increase. We are looking at the possibility of some kind of supplemental budget for this year, but right now, that remains unsure. The other thing that did not pass was local emergency management grants. The hopeful thing about that is that there was money in the budget right up until the last minute for local emergency management grants. That's as far as it's gotten in the legislature, and as far as I know. So we're hopeful that that will be included in the next budget cycle. Some things that did pass were a change in inmate transfer protocols. Before this session, if you were transferring an inmate more than 100 miles, it would have to be with an officer of the same sex, which means generally, when a female is transferred, a female deputy or officer would have to be taken off the road, which means she would get more experience with transfers and less road experience. They're changing it so that now, as long as the car that you take transfer with has video equipment, it doesn't matter if the officer is of the opposite sex. So I see that as a good thing for all law enforcement in the state. Another change is that all law enforcement agencies will have to create sexual assault investigation policies by October 1st of this year, and that will apply to county sheriff's departments as well. There's a change in sexual assault reporting, which allows victims to report sexual assaults in any county in the state, which means that law enforcement agencies will need to be very careful about how they refer those reports out, because if you charge it in the wrong jurisdiction, that makes it very difficult to actually convict someone. So, another thing that passed was the TELACPR bill that requires that dispatchers are trained in providing CPR over the phone. In some smaller counties where there aren't a lot of dispatchers, they can opt out of that training, but then create protocols to transfer the call to a call center that has trained dispatchers. And the last thing I'll talk about is the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative that places, or has, creates community programming for juveniles to keep them out of detention. That received $500,000 each year of the biennium for staffing and to-do community grants. So, if you have any questions?
Any questions? No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your good work this year. Looking forward to working with you in the future. Okay, Keith?
Mr. Chairman, members, that completes our presentation. I do want to thank Carver County for its continued membership in the organization. Specifically, want to recognize Commissioner Milochnik and Commissioner Digler for representing your county on our Board of Directors. They do an excellent job in that regard. Also want to acknowledge the staff. We've already heard about Mr. Franks, Mr. Rob Donnet. I want to recognize Dave Freshman and Carrie Andereka, who participate in our Fiscal Officers and Human Resources Committee, respectively. All of them do a great job on sharing information that may be useful for other counties, as well as assisting us in identifying issues and assisting us at the legislatures. Mr. Hemsey has a great staff under him. Finally, I just want to give you an update on the status of my position. As was noted, I am retiring August 2nd. Our executive committee, out of 40 applicants, interviewed four individuals and directed me to negotiate a compensation agreement with one of those four. I have done that within the financial parameters that they've given me, but there's some additional issues that have yet to be resolved by the executive committee, but I expect to be able to announce my successor in a matter of a couple weeks. So that's where things stand with the organization. Be happy to hear any final comments or questions.
Any comments? Commissioner Digler?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I should have mentioned it earlier. Tax conformity was a big issue going into the session. Where did Rob?
Mr. Chairman, unlike last year, first, the bill passed. Secondly, the state chose to, legislature chose to conform with much more of the federal tax changes than the bill that was vetoed last year. So that means that the personal exemption that previously was part of our state individual income tax, that previously was also part of the federal income tax but was eliminated by their bill a year ago, we now have no personal exemption. But offsetting that is a substantial increase, effectively a doubling of the standard deduction, so much fewer individuals are going to itemize that than they did in the past. Most of the itemized deduction changes that occurred at the federal level were adopted. One of those which is perhaps important to you is that that means there's a $10,000 cap on the deduction of state and local taxes. So for your larger property taxpayers, that may be an issue for them. So that's by and large what happened in the federal update. Obviously, there's much, much more detail. The other aspect that you should be aware of is that there was a rate reduction in the middle bracket from 7.05 to 6.85%. So anybody in the, you know, the lower-middle on up is going to receive some tax relief from those rate reductions. I do want to point out, overall, though, taxes overall, in all categories, actually slightly increased through the combination of all those changes and additional changes in the sales and other tax areas.
Any comments? Did you have something, Commissioner Workman, please?
Well, Keith, congratulations on a good, long career. You were up to a lot of mischief before you even started with MICA, I think, weren't you? But then that got him a great job at MICA. It was a great job. I'd be curious to hear if you're burning your suits and ties and gonna be wearing only brewery t-shirts soon, or...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not burning them yet, but they are on their last legs.
So, state of the state from Keith, as he's walking out the door, it seems maybe that you're saying the state's in a little bit of a jittery situation, maybe not a sustainable outlook for the state, more trouble down the road? Is that what I'm kind of hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I frankly have held that view ever since the state took over supposedly the funding of K-12 education back in 2001. They have two big financial obligations, and that's Health and Human Services and K-12, and the rest of the budget has frequently suffered because of the significant amount of monies that are spent in those two areas. They were able to sustain, I think, a reasonable amount of funding. Your brethren, sisters in... sisters in K-12 may argue otherwise, but that continues to concern me that they are funding far more of traditional state and local government than many other states are, and has a consequence, can't do justice to some of the more traditional areas, particularly including transportation.
Well, again, congratulations and thank you for all your hard work, and I'll miss seeing you down at the Capitol.
Miss you too, Senator.
Very good. Keith and Commissioner Workman said it well. Of course, he spent many years over there at the legislature, working with you, but you've been a great help to many counties in our issues over the years and your experience in property taxes and other tax situations and all the issues over there. I think your expertise might be missed, but you've brought some people along too, so we'll see how that all works out. But from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much for, I mean, you've helped me and I know you've helped my county and my taxpayers, and I wish the taxpayers could understand all that you've done for them in your public service. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
All right. That concludes our MICA legislative update. Moving on to our next category. Number seven is under our mission statements of communities. Create, maintain, safe, healthy, and livable communities. 7.1 has been deleted, so we'll move on to 7.2, which is a request creation of a 1.0 FTE law enforcement co-responder crisis therapist. And we have Rod Franks on board for this presentation. Mr. Franks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'd like to invite Sheriff Camerud up to the podium with me. We are very excited to bring this item before you today for approval, and it's really due to the creativity and support and commitment from the Carver County Sheriff's Department that we're able to do this at all. We are really looking at creating a gold standard service in terms of our crisis mobile response in Carver County by creating a co-responder model between the mobile crisis team and our law enforcement officers out on the road. So with that kind of introduction, I'd like to turn this over to Sheriff Camerud to fill you in on some of the details, and then I can follow up when we're done.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Sheriff Camerud, welcome. How are you doing this morning?
Doing very well, thank you.
You look fished out to me. I don't know.
No, sir. I've got plenty of gas left in me.
Okay, great to go, Sheriff. All right.
But, you know, over the last several years, we have seen a significant increase in calls for service relating to mental health. And, you know, we also know that availability for services has been decreased quite a bit. And so basically, that leaves law enforcement as the primary first responders to mental health calls. And over the last couple of years, we have ramped up our training efforts quite a bit. I know Sheriff Jim Olson came to you in 2016 or 17 to seek additional funding, to get the deputies trained up to the top-tier 40-hour crisis intervention training, and that has been working out quite well. But we're still seeing, we're still seeing a shortage of service delivery in that area. You see, what happens is when the deputies go to the call, if the person is not reasonably determined to be both mentally ill and a threat to self or others, law enforcement has no authority to connect that person with services or to provide any services other than general referrals. And so we try to resolve that issue then and there, to the extent that we can, right? Now, we're not mental health professionals, and so what we can do is very limited. When the threshold is triggered, where they're both mentally ill and a threat to themselves or others, why, then we can transport them to a hospital. That's when Health and Human Services gets involved, comes and does an assessment, provides immediate counseling, makes appropriate referrals, and so on and such. And that really gets the client connected with the services. That doesn't happen in the majority of our cases. In the majority of our calls for service, and I don't have the data, but I know anecdotally and from other times looking at the data, the majority of the times, they are not a threat to themselves and others, and they're not for sure mentally ill. And so that's where the service ends, and then we subsequently get called back later. And so the idea here is to have the co-responder come with law enforcement and provide that assessment, immediate counseling, referral to community resources, and so on and such in the field. And we know that Scott County does a similar thing with a third party. They contracted for it, and they didn't have real good data analysis, but they know anecdotally that they're seeing less return trips to that client later. And so we've had, as you folks know, we've had some vacant deputy positions that we haven't been able to fill, and some of them have been vacant for quite some time. And so shortly after the election, I started looking at that and just realized that, I think, from conversation with our constituents, that building a better mousetrap in terms of mental health call response is a priority. It was more important than having a licensed deputy, and so I put together a proposal and worked with Dave Hemsy and Rod Franks where we take some sheriff's office money to fund a position in Health and Human Services so that we can have people in the field to provide that immediate counseling and referrals and whatnot. And other agencies are doing this. You know, Rod says correctly, I believe, it is the gold standard today. And, you know, I'd like to give it a whirl, so to speak, and implement that here and hopefully get the same types of results that other agencies are getting. With that, I would be open to some questions, or I think Rod has some additional particulars that might...
Why don't we hear from Rod, and then we can ask some questions if we need to?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Sheriff Camerud. This next phase of crisis response is really just a continuation of the deep collaboration that exists between the Carver County Sheriff's Department and Health and Human Services. And I think on the basis of that collaborative relationship, we are able to move in this new direction to provide the highest level of services in mental health response to the residents of Carver County. This new position will be wholly dedicated to responding with law enforcement. So while the position will be part of the mobile crisis response team administratively and under its supervision, its work will be completely engaged and integrated with law enforcement response. And we are just really excited to bring this helpful and necessary services to those that are struggling and in need in Carver County. We're hoping too, to establish a model that will become the standard of replication across the state of Minnesota. And so with that, the sheriff and I would stand for questions.
All right. Questions from the board members. Commissioner Degler?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this position will have all the authority that a law enforcement agent would normally have, and if they pull up, am I going to be able to tell that this is a crisis person, or is this just a law enforcement, not just a law enforcement, but are people going to be able to tell the difference?
That's a question for the sheriff, I believe, yes.
Excellent question, Commissioner. And this is a co- and separate response. So the idea is the call comes into the 911 dispatch center, gets dispatched to the patrol deputy, who goes to the scene and ensures that the scene is safe. At that point, they will summon the crisis worker who will be in business attire, and the crisis worker then will do his or her job. If the deputy needs to stick around, then he or she will to maintain scene safety and whatnot. If, however, things are calm and the crisis worker feels reasonably safe being alone, then that frees up the deputy to return to patrol duties.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Workman?
I should answer. I got to answer my question.
Okay, Commissioner Degler, or Lynch, I'm sorry.
I would just like to make, compliment both the sheriff and Rod for working very well together, and also for having their finger on the pulse of the needs of Carver County residents. I think this is, they're very forward-thinking, and Rod even mentioned that this would be a model for the state to follow. And with that, if no one has any other questions, I'd make the motion to approve the creation of a 1 FTE law enforcement co-responder crisis therapist.
Commissioner Lynch, John, the motion to create the position, second by Commissioner Degler, further discussion. And under further discussion, I've visited facilities like this and other places, and Mr. Franks and the sheriff, we've had those conversations. It reduces the recidicisms, what the law enforcement people like to call the frequent flyers, and, you know, which you may not need a deputy if you can reduce, you know, how many times you got to go out with one person or whatever. So bottom line is it reduces law enforcement calls, and it can reduce the price tag to the taxpayer. So I'd like to see and track how this comes out. I'd like to see you guys come back and give us a little presentation in about a year on where you feel we're at, you know, on the situation. So with that, is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. Thank you very much, Mr. Franks and Sheriff Camerud.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving on to the next item is 7.3, Contract with GL Contracting Incorporated. Phase one, Site Development, Lake Waconia Regional Park, Coney Island. And I believe we have, oh, Mr. Marty Walsh, our Parks Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Marty. Welcome.
We'll get out of this presentation and pull up another one here for you. Okay, so here we go. As you're aware, we've got some work going on in Coney Island, and our next round of work includes Phase one development for the island. But just to remind folks, we do have an ongoing operation out there that involves clearing of vegetation. This diagram here kind of shows the trails, the east end of the island, trail system that connects all the way over to the west end. The active use areas are those level spots, if you will, on both the east and west end, and trail system that also hooks up back through what is known as Negley's Park. So just again, a quick reminder of this work that's going on to clear the site for preparation of construction activities and trail area so that the scope of work includes both of those active areas on both the east and west end, as well as preparation for trails. And here, a couple of graphic representations of those areas. I would mention, there's quite a bit of work that's going on on this east end. This is where the football team used to practice, and it's pretty tough to imagine that with that vegetation that they had practice in that area. But if you would go there today, it is very, very level through there, and you can reimagine that that activity could have taken place in that site. So moving on here to the planned Phase one development for the island, and going back to our master plan, again, just emphasizing the areas where the development is taking place on both the east and west end of the islands and a connecting trail that goes through the island, making that connection from east to west. Here's just a plan sheet, again, just to kind of show you a couple of areas through here. But what I really wanted to highlight here is you can see this dashed line that comes down, this embankment, and I think many of you remember the hillside that is on the west end of the island, and that's steep grade. This is the area that is proposed for a retaining wall in order for us to make that grade accessible. We'll talk a bit more about that in a little bit. So the base bid work activities include day-use picnic areas, which we just covered, both Ambler's Point and Ziegland's Point. Trail construction activities at Ambler's Point, a looping trail that is in that picnic area. Also, the historic trail from east to west, from Ziegland's Point across the cement, old cement walkway of Yuland Avenue and up near the top of the, what I'll say is the west end of the island, before descending down into the Ambler's Point area. And then there are some natural or woodchip trails that are proposed that would be around the Negley Park area or near the area of where the rookery used to be. So the base activity works continued here. Again, some of the things that will be going on have to do with some of the old foundations that exist on the site. Those foundations will be essentially kind of filled, if you will, but because everything is historic, a portion of that will be, remain above grade. And some of the debris that's in those foundations will be removed. The Hirschfield Boathouse has a concrete slab that extends over the span, and that is kind of a dangerous piece, and that will be removed. And then there's other things that are out there. There'll be some damaged seawall, the old stone wall that's around that Ambler's Point. Portions of that will be removed. We are just working with really kind of a few structures on site, both the Lacks, Burack, and Lyndon cabins. These are in the area of Yuland Avenue where the concrete sidewalk is. Those areas, the rock foundations and stairways will be preserved. Some of the debris will be removed from those sites. Other cabins and structures that are on the site will be protected with fencing, and they will remain largely as is until we have the resources to clean those So moving on here, we have consideration for a bid alternate, which is the retaining wall area where the trail goes. That embankment is quite steep today. It would complete the east-west trail connection, making that accessible. Right now, there's kind of a beaten path that goes up a very steep grade to the top of the hill. It removes the barrier and safety issues with the steep slope, and it is most economically addressed with this phase of So our requested action, Mr. Chair, members, is a motion to award the contract to GL Contracting for the base bid amount of $649, $958 for Phase one site development of a Coney Regional Park, Coney Island, upon completion of the contract review process. The second motion here is a motion to award bid alternates to GL Contracting for an additional $205. And again, this is largely work that is related to the retaining wall and constructing the trail in that area where the steep slope is, upon completion of the contract review process and subject to the 2020 budget approval and request for Metropolitan Council reimbursement grant funds from land acquisition of 226. So we are scheduled to receive $226,000 from the Metropolitan Council. That has passed legislation, and at this point in time, the contracts are being drafted for that. And then going further here, that money being used to fund, to fund these, the bid alternates. Mr. Chair, members, I'd stand for questions.
Okay, quickly, just for County Attorney Metz, do you have any problems with us combining those two motions then? All right, very good.
No.
No, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Members, question? Board members for Mr. Walsh?
I do not. He just read it. I'd like to make that motion if I could. I think the retaining wall is vitally important too, and we were out there with the park commission. One of the park commission members actually may have had a horrible fall, so the retaining wall is vitally important.
So we'll combine the two motions by simply adding the word "and" after the process in "one" and removing in "two" the motion's motion "two." So that's very easy to do, so we can let the record reflect that. So is there further discussion? If not, I'm looking, you're making that motion?
I am making that motion, sir.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Lynch. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ishii. Any further discussion regarding this motion?
Okay, regarding the motion, all of the...
Regarding the motion?
Wait, it doesn't concern the motion.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Did you have a question?
Yeah, Marty, we haven't heard anything about camarades lately, that bird.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Degler, no. The rookeries of the camarades, egrets, and herons does not appear to be active on the...
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Keep up the good work. I understand you're everywhere in the region, in the legislature, in all your spare time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You run across Commissioner Workman occasionally too out there, huh?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I have to leave now. I'm not leaving because Mr. Hemsy's coming to the podium, but I have a funeral I need to get to.
All right, well, pay our respects, and I know that you're a pallbearer at the funeral, so take care.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, see your friend off well. So our next item, under number eight... So our next item, under number eight, in our mission is culture, provide organizational culture, fostering accountability to achieve goals and sustain public trust, confidence in county government. Item 8.1 is the Carver County 2019, 2020 strategic plan. Mr. Hemsey will make it in the presentation. Mr. Hemsey, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, board members. I will be brief. This is something we do each year on a cyclical basis. I'm presenting you the 2019, 2020 strategic plan. It's really an update. There are a number of, let's call them moderate, changes in the mixture. I'm not gonna go through them all. The details are in your packet. And of course, you were with us when we held a strategic planning retreat back in May 28th, and I think it was very appropriate. We're out at the Mental Wellness Center. That is one of our strategic initiatives in the mental health area. So, so that was a good meeting. One of, one of the changes in this year's process was we coupled the budget, in this case, the 2020 budget, discussion with that meeting, since a lot of these initiatives take some money to get them done. So we did go through the budget during that meeting, and I'd like to thank you for your participation in that, and also the division directors are really instrumental in, in putting this package together, and they work with all of their staff, too. So it is really a team effort to put this together. We also went through, with every organization, we have our challenges, but with every challenge comes opportunity, so we sort of set the stage for the updating of the strategic plan that we discussed that day. I would like to remind you, we do have the higher level vision statement and the mission statement I put up on the board here. We're not recommending a change to those, but those are really high-level guiding statements for our organization. We are also not recommending changes to our five top goals, and I'm also recommending that you keep those on the agenda. I think that works very well, to keep those in front of you. A lot of these critical, important actions come through the boardroom, and, and they all definitely tie back to one or more of these goals that we have organizationally. Here's a great picture, one of our roundabout projects. It's a good example of one of our strategic initiatives in the transportation area, not just with our staff here, but in this case, it's by the Waconia High School, so at the school district and the city. So it really is illustrative of a great accomplishment that was, that was very recent. Under each of these goals, there are a numbers, number of strategic initiatives that we're recommending. Again, I'm not gonna go through them all. Just to mention a few, though, I think, I think it's interesting, today, we had a number of them on the agenda. One of them was pulled, and we'll get back to that, with our remodeling of the mental health wellness facility. But Mr. Marty Walsh was just here talking about Lakewakonia Park. That's one of the other, one of the many initiatives in the packet. The crisis issue was on the agenda today, another very critical, high-level topic that we're, we're trying to address, not only through that, I think, a very smart move with staff, but through, through a number of other initiatives that are blended into this document. And let's not forget about our employees here. There are a number of initiatives, addressing employee cultural issues, wages and benefits, those kinds of things. So again, all the details in your packet, Mr. Chair, I'd stand for questions on any of that. If not, I'd look for a motion to adopt the plan.
Any questions for our county administrator?
Still moved.
Second to approve the strategic plan for 2019 and '20 has been made by Commissioner Workman, and second by Commissioner Deggler. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we have to reiterate the fact that we've gone through this many times, and it's not like we're just rushing through it and moving this. It's, we've been prepared.
Don't want to say it's been painful hours, but we've spent some time on this, is, and I noticed, I know a couple of years ago that people would think that, well, we're just running things through here, but we spend hours down here reviewing a lot of this material, and it's like the budget, we spend, what, eight months on that, Mr. Hemsey? So, yeah, so we want people to know, we've spent some time on this, and all the board members have been at those meetings, and their inputs have all been welcome, and it's all been good, so. All right, with, with the motion, any further discussion? Are there none, or all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, that motion prevails. We now have a strategic plan for 2019 and '20. Thank you, Mr. Hemsey.
Thank you.
All right, my understanding is that we need to go into closed session for a discussion of County Administrator Hemsey's mid-year performance evaluation before we take that motion, and let folks know, then after that, we'll be adjourning and going into a work session, and that's, we're gonna be discussing the proposal to eliminate park interest fees and some Lakewakonia Regional Park update, and that's in a works, a workshop session. So with that, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you. I think Carrie could, if she could say a few words about, about why we're going into closed session before we shut the camera.
That'd be great. Let's do that, so...
I dragged her up here, so I wanted...
You wanted to make sure that she earns her pay on this particular item. All right. Carrie, go ahead. You've got the spiel all ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Good morning. As part of the countywide performance evaluation process, employees typically meet with their supervisor for a mid-year evaluation conversation. This is an opportunity to review progress toward meeting goals that were established for the year, as well as providing feedback on performance, talking about what's going well, and areas of opportunity for growth. Similar to the process for other county employees, we are providing a mid-year evaluation opportunity for the county administrator with the board. The county board is allowed to meet in closed session to evaluate performance of their direct reports, so a closed session is permitted for this discussion. At an upcoming regular board session, a summary of the board's conclusions regarding the mid-year evaluation will be shared.
Okay, very well. So then the motion would be in order to...